Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Danville.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this fourteenth day of August 2017. Looking to my left and right, we have quorum. So I will call us to order. And I will request that Commissioner Sears lead us in a moment.
Yeah. I think everyone has read the news and over the weekend, we have something that we're not proud of, and that was a tragedy at Charlottesville, Virginia. And so my motive of operations is not to have a prayer, but a moment of silence to reflect on the victims of that and their families. So if you will do that with me, please. And thank you.
Thank you. We have a special treat tonight. We're going to be led, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Grant, you want to introduce your two guests wherever you say.
We have, is this on? We have with us today to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, two of our esteemed senior citizens, and both Emeritus Board members for the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizen Center, Ms. Vi Wilmot and Edna Kaufman. Ladies.
Lead the charge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Atkins, if you please, if you'll do the honors. We have a little traditional, everybody leads us in the pledge, gets a little lapel pin, key to the city. Commission, you have before you the agenda. And I would like to entertain a motion to get through all of our business for tonight, since our material's quite thick, and have the second hear the public at the end of business.
Can we get a rough head count of who was gonna wait and had something to say at the second hear the public? I thought it was just one or two.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, we'll do it as we've got it. So everything else on the agenda meet your approval?
Mr. Mayor, may we consider putting the Commissioner's comments at the end of the meeting?
I think that's fine.
By that time, maybe the house will be empty, so nobody will hear them, so.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a motion second to a hearing discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll do that. So with that said, we are in the section we call Hear the Public. This is your opportunity to speak on any item that is on the budget. As you have now heard, there'll be an item, excuse me, on the budget. Tell where my head's been. On the agenda, you'll have an opportunity later on to have Hear the Public on any other Mr. Becker?
Hi, my name's Steve Becker. I live at 235 Maple Avenue, Danville. I'm here for the citizens that can't afford a sewer rate increase. And there are many. I'm here for wondering why we're gonna do a 70% increase for the citizens of Danville. And I understand we probably need to do it, but why are we doing it all at once? And then also for the school systems, the corporate customers. I know Danville schools will experience about an $8,000 increase in their sewer fee. That's pittance to a lot of places. But that's also a lot of computers, a lot of help for teachers, a lot of help for our students. So I know the need is there. I really trust you guys in that. But I really think that this needs to be levied over a little bit of time. I do think about, I'm on a fixed income. I mean, in fact, we are all on fixed incomes. So I mean, you get hit with 200 or 300 bucks here, 200 or 300 bucks there. Everybody's on fixed income. And also see what's coming down the pike for governments with the CERS, the increases that we're all gonna be experiencing at school districts or cities, counties. And so there's only so much that you can deal with that becomes surprises. So I really am asking you all to consider not to vote on the policy as it stands on the second reading, and that you all do take in consideration, maybe go back to the shop and see if there are any other possibilities that might exist. I mean, what's it gonna hurt if you put it off for two weeks? That's what I'm asking. Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Item one, you have before you, Commission, the minutes from July the 24th. I'll entertain a motion to accept them as presented or otherwise.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Cottle. We're in discussion. If there are any additions or corrections.
For me, for me to abstain. You can do it anyway.
Seeing none, I'll call the question for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as presented? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you so much. Item two, is there anyone here? Yeah, of course there is. Ben, I tell you what, let me just come down there and save everybody here. Ladies, gentlemen, today I'd like to read a proclamation for the National Senior Citizens' Day for August 21, 2017. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated August 21, 2017 as National Senior Citizens' Day, and whereas throughout history, older people have achieved much for our families, our communities, and our country. This remains true today and gives us ample reason to reserve a special day in honor of the senior citizens who mean so much to our community and, whereas, with more years of productivity, older citizens are reinforcing their historical roles as leaders and as links with our patrimony and sense of purpose as individuals and as a nation. Many older people are embarking on second careers, giving younger Americans a fine example of responsibility, resourcefulness, competence, and determination. And whereas, more than four and a half million senior citizens are serving as volunteers in various programs and projects that benefit every sector of society, and wherever the needs exist, older people are making their presence felt. And whereas, for all they have achieved throughout life and for all they continue to accomplish, we owe older citizens our thanks and a heartfelt salute. We, as a community, can best demonstrate our gratitude and esteem by making sure that our communities are good places in which to mature and grow old, places in which older people can participate to the fullest and can find the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services they need to continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the City of Danville, on this fourteenth day of August 2017, do hereby proclaim Monday, August 21, 2017, as National Senior Citizens' Day, and call upon all citizens of Danville to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Do we hear a motion that we accept that proclamation?
Being a senior citizen myself, I am moved to accept the proclamation.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Who would like to receive this? You're welcome.
Would you tell us some plans that you all have for that day?
Yes. We're going to have a community-wide celebration on...
Is it on?
Is it not on? There we go. We are going to have a community-wide celebration on the 21st, which is Monday. Hometown Radio will be onsite. We'll be having hamburgers and hot dogs and drinks for the public. And our seniors that participate in our programming are gonna be making some homemade desserts to share with the community. So those in the gallery today, we'd invite you all to come, but we would especially like to invite our City Commission and the mayor and our elected officials, who so graciously give of their time, talent, and resources and support the seniors of this community with some much-needed funding. So we want to invite you all to come out on Monday as well.
What time is that?
It will begin around 11 o'clock.
11 until when?
Till we either run out of hamburgers or about 1:00 or 1:30. Depends on how many burgers we can get Charlie Perry to grill. But thank you all very much for the proclamation. On behalf of the senior citizens of the City of Danville, I extend my heartfelt gratitude.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
You even arranged an eclipse.
Oh, yes, we also arranged for an eclipse.
Oh, specially.
Yeah, we had that, we're having that piped in, special, so.
Special presentation, thank you. Do you have glasses for us that day?
I'm sorry you're breaking up. What was that? The reception over here's not very good.
Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Item three, you have before you, my recommendation, or actually a recommendation from the CVB, Convention and Visitors Bureau, recommend that Brittany Henderson be appointed to the Board to serve her full term. She is replacing Cody Polston, as the hotel motel B&amp;B appointment term expired in March 2017. You have her bio in front of you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. We're in discussion.
It looked like a good choice. I think you ladies did well. Do you ladies want to say anything? No? Yep, there we go.
Nope.
Let's not miss that opportunity, right?
Brittany did let us know. She apologizes. She had something come up with her son, which is why she's not here with us this evening. But we're really happy to have Red Roof on board.
And thanks for including the great information about my career.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer. You have a motion, a second? Anything further, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item four is Resolution 2017-08-04-01. This is in regard to our solid waste management plan. Ms. Fekter.
Donna, where are you being?
The one and only Donna.
I haven't seen you in over a...
Yes, I know.
Long time, Donna. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening. It's great to be here. Thank you very much. It has been a while. I've been working hard. I'm hoping that you think your roads are clean and that the community is looking good. We're very proud of what we do at the Solid Waste Department and appreciate all of the things the City of Danville gives to us in the Solid Waste Department. Where we are right now is the five-year solid waste management plan. Every five years, I come to you with a management plan. This is my fifth plan, just to let you know how many years I have been with you. I am now in my 27th year working with Danville Boyle County.
You're just getting broke in.
Ah, yeah. And so this will be my last plan. This plan here...
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute, hold on now.
Hold on.
You're hearing a motion that this not be her last plan.
I'll be around, I'll be around.
We don't have to agree to that.
Yeah. But this plan here is a very simple, it's one of the simpler ones I've written. I didn't put too much in because there will be, towards the end of this plan, somebody else that will walk in, and I want them to be able to work on some things with the cities and the county. This plan has an area designation of which the City of Danville, of course, is part. It's for the City of Danville, the City of Junction, the City of Perriville, and Boyle County, unincorporated. In part of this plan, it's in different sections. There is collection and disposal, recycling, litter, financial mechanisms, siting, all of the things we deal with in solid waste management. And so each section I do, I do for each one. The biggest thing in this plan, it was out on public notice for 30 days through the end of June through July, for the public to look at. We did not get any comments or anything adversely to this plan, and so it seems that everybody is on board. The only real difference in this plan for the City of Danville that I can see is the fact that I am asking that when you go up for a new contract in 2020, now you can extend, but at some point, if you don't extend, I'm asking that you set up some kind of a committee to do information for the City Commission to make a decision on a pay-as-you-throw system, to look at incremental solid waste disposal. And this can help some of our seniors or people that are living alone, getting from small cans to medium-sized containers to large containers. What you throw away, you pay for. With that, it gives us more of an incentive for recycling. And so that, in this plan, that is really the biggest thing for the City of Danville. Everything is basically talking about your strengths and your weaknesses, and the City of Danville has many strengths, because we have curbside solid waste, we have curbside recycling. People here can dispose of their trees and limbs at the Alum Springs Convenience Center. The city and the county, as far as solid waste management, work hand-in-hand extremely well together. And I'm very proud of that partnership that we have. As far as litter, you know, the city has given, their portion of the litter abatement grant goes to the county. We do about $30,000 in litter abatement grant every year. About $8,000 of that is the City of Danville's. It goes to us, so much is also Perriville's, and then the rest is Boyle County's. What we do is we are obligated to clean your roads in the City of Danville three times a year. Now, we're here more than three times a year, I'm sure you know that. We're here for all your festivals, for all your fairs. We clean them up, we make them look good, especially a brass band festival. When they're walking down there during that parade, it is spotless. We work, we get out there 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning to make sure that this town looks good for the people that come to visit it and the residents that look here, you know, live here. But with that being said, I'd also like to put out my phone number for people that are listening in television land, and that's 859-319-7049. And if you see litter or if you see solid waste, you can call that number at Let Me Know, or you can call the Boyle County Recycling Center after 5:00 PM at 859-238-1116 and leave a message on the phone, and we will get somebody out there as quickly as we can to clean it up. We try to get it before it goes all over the place. So we assist you with that. Also, the wood waste program. We've got a dynamite wood waste program where the county works with Cox Interior out of Campbellsville. It helps our industries and it helps our residents. So you can dispose of at the Alum Springs Convenience Center just outside of Junction City, off of 300, all of your trees or limbs from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. Now, that's not root balls, and that's not bushes, we're talking of trees and limbs. And when we have special events that come up, and we call them maybe pre-Pharma events, where a storm has come through, we will extend hours for that at that convenience center. So we are here to help you in many, many ways. Once again, like I said, the City of Danville has many, many strengths. Every other year, we do a household hazardous waste collection for you. We talk with people about household hazardous waste all the time. People call, here's one of our most common calls that I'd like to get out there, is people ask, what do they do with the new bulbs? And the new bulbs, they have mercury in them. Right now, Lowe's takes them. You can go into Lowe's, and they have a disposal area for those bulbs. So if you have them, do not throw them in your solid waste container. Please, take them out to Lowe's. They are kind and they are generous enough to have to take them. Our convenience centers take all of your electronics, take all of your batteries, whether they be car batteries, motorcycle batteries, ATV batteries, lawn batteries, or even your As, double As, triple As, CEDs, we take them all there also. And speaking of convenience centers, you know, we're very, very blessed in this community to have convenience centers. I think if we had to open them up and start from scratch now, it would not be cost-effective. But they are cost-effective, because in the wisdom of the county and the city, many, many years ago, these convenience centers were set up within five miles of every home in the city or in the county, whichever city or county, wherever you live. Ghost Pike is the City of Danville's. We were open six days a week from 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM. We even have out there for recycling, not just clothes, not just cardboard, not just glass, not just paper, plastic, and all of that, but we also have used grease. So if you're doing a turkey or you're using a lot of grease, not just for our small businesses, but residents, you can go out there and there is a recycling grease container, and it's been there for four or five years now. So we want people to know that it is there. And recycling is the key to these convenience centers. Now, the county bears the cost of the convenience centers, and I'm gonna tell you, and this is gonna shock you, that five convenience centers without capital expenses is costing us $900,000. And I'm sure you know that the City of Danville pays about $700,000, $800,000 for their solid waste. Yes, I've got the figures in here, but...
It's more.
Yeah, it is. I can look in your financial mechanism and let you know exactly what it is, because I think people just do not have really much of an idea of exactly what the expense is to government for solid waste disposal. And so when we look at, okay, collection for the City of Danville and Perriville, and Perriville is $40,000 of this, this year, $943,240, according to the figures that we got from the City of Danville and the City of Perriville. Now Boyle County, another $900,000. Now, we're a small county, city, and we pay, what, $1.8 million? But when you consider everything, and this also includes your wastewater, your recycling for your sludge, this year, solid waste in totality is $2,463 and change. So what am I asking for people that come to the convenience centers or people at home anywhere? Please recycle. I can't say it enough. I'll say it again. Please recycle. At the convenience centers, every single box that goes out, we pay for. So those compactor boxes go out at about $455 a box. They handle between 10 and 12 tons of solid waste. So what are we looking at? Minimum here, $45 a ton. But those open-top boxes, because I think that we must be the mattress and box spring capital of the world, those boxes, at $350, $360 a pull, we only get about 1 to 1.5 tons in. So now you're looking at $170 a ton. But all of the boxes that are there, the scrap metal, the cardboard, the paper, all of those boxes cost us nothing. So when you recycle, every pull that we get on those boxes costs us nothing. But every time you throw waste that can be recycled into a container, it costs us something. So if I can just get people, cardboard, the plastics, and please, BoyleKY.com can show you exactly what to recycle. In the City of Danville, we have it on our website, plus the City of Danville's website, DanvilleKY.org. So please, I can't say, people out in television land, please look at these sites and work with us, because as I'm hearing here, everything is going up. But here's a chance to help us to reduce and not go up. Because number one, as far as these convenience centers, what do they give the City of Danville? You've got solid waste disposal, you're paying for that. $900,000, it includes your recycling. But what is the convenience center for you? It is all of those bulky items that you can't get rid of, and it's free of charge. So if you've got a swing set out there, and it's a metal swing set, put it in the scrap metal pile. You know, we don't pay for the pull, and there it is. So that's really what we're trying to get across. Once again, it truly is about recycling. So we can help each other out with those things right there. Sitting, I'll just mention, want to welcome our new planning and zoning director. I haven't personally gotten to meet him yet, and I will get to meet soon enough. Years ago, I worked with Paula Berry, making sure that we had ordinances in place for junk yards, for salvage yards. You can't just open up a landfill here anymore. You can't just open up a one-acre C and D or a permit by rule anymore. You can't just do it. You've got a wonderful code enforcement department in the City of Danville. I work with them regularly, with Bridgette and Tom. We try to do the same things out in the county. And so I think solid waste is in a really good position, solid waste management in this city and in this county, and I, of course, would like to see it stay that way. I will now entertain any questions you might have and ask if you will please vote on the area designation and the approval of the 2018 to 2022 five-year solid waste management plan.
Donna, could you repeat all that, please?
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
Recycle.
For approval of Resolution 2017-08-1401.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cottle, second by Commissioner Sears. Discussion.
Just one quick question, Donna. Is it true that we're still the only county surrounding that our convenience centers are free?
Pretty much, yes. Yes, we are. And that, let me just say one other thing before I mention our commission with, the City of Danville had two people on. Our convenience center is, one of the problems that we have, is people from other counties coming to us because we are free. And we've tried sticker programs, we've tried everything, but now, the big thing, and I want everybody to hear this well, so they don't get upset, when you come to a convenience center, have your license ready. Have your license ready. Because we don't know everybody, and we will ask. We have come down thousands of people, because remember, if you've got one person coming from one county, and they're coming only once a week, that's 52 times, just that one person. And a lot of people work in the City of Danville and Boyle County, and we're glad to have them, but payroll taxes do not pay for solid waste disposal. And so I will just say that, and I'm sorry, and I wish we could help them, but there isn't a mechanism for that. And with that being said, I would like to just discuss and let you know, we had a committee, and the City of Danville had two people, Sarah Valkamp, who is out of town right now and couldn't be with us, and they've worked very hard on this. We've been working on this plan since January, and Gail Lewis, and I think she might want to say a word or two. And I just want to thank them very, very much, and our entire crew of people that came every other week, from January all the way to June, to get this plan done and look at everything we thought we could do to help to maintain and keep solid waste management moving forward. So I think...
Could I ask you one quick question? Donna, about the report itself, something that caught my eye, it's on my page five, I don't know if that corresponds with yours as well, but has waste management or waste generation projections for five, 10, and 15, 20 years? For the first, you know, five or 10 years, the tons hold really steady, but then we go out 10 more years, it doubles and the population actually goes down.
Yes, because you're looking at two, five years, and then a 10-year, so it does double. It's exactly what it does.
So, okay, that's just the cumulative of the two.
Five, five, 10.
Got you. I thought maybe I cleaned out my attic in there or something.
No. Oh, and one other thing. One other thing, in the spring and the fall, in your contract, something that's big, there are a few things we managed to get in your contract, but one was the free, 10 free solid waste containers that you get through M&amp;M. But the other thing is the bulky item pickup at the curb. This is huge. In the spring and the fall, especially for our seniors and people with disabilities, ask a neighbor, ask a friend, people can clean out and get rid of their bulky items at the curb, once in the spring and once in the fall, and we notify people of this through ads and radio to do that. So we ask you, if you know a senior citizen, you know somebody with disabilities that might want to clean out their backyard or shed... might want to clean out their backyard or shed, and they have something they can't move, please help a neighbor, help a friend, be safe, and move the stuff to the curb during the bulky item pickup week. Thank you very much, Gail.
I just want to say one thing, and that is, I don't know how this lady does what she does. I've worked with her, this is my third rodeo. She's done five, this was my third one. And every five years when I come back to do this again with Donna, I think, how does this woman maintain all of this? How does she keep it all? She knows everything. There are no questions she can't answer about... So she is truly Kentucky's solid waste queen, and we are going to have to do, we're going to have to really go somewhere to replace her when she does decide to go.
Can we make that a proclamation one day?
Solid waste queen.
Solid waste queen.
But it is amazing what goes into that. I've been so grateful that I've had the opportunity to be a part of this for the last three plans, but thank you, and just give your thanks to this lady. She keeps Danville clean.
Yes, she does. Donna Factor, you are an epitome of what a public servant is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying, you have something to say?
Recycle.
All in favor of the motion, say recycle.
Recycle.
All opposed, motion carries.
Recycle that too, right?
Do that. All right. Item five, an update.
Good evening. Yes, we had, the building inspector has issued a demolition permit for the roof, and the property owners continue to work on that and getting that covered up so that'll keep water out of there, so...
What we're speaking about is 311 West Main.
Yes.
Just telling the audience.
Yes. So we are moving forward on that. On your July code enforcement report that's in front of you, we had 30 grass and weed complaints this month, and we issued 24 business licenses for a total of $600, and we placed 10 liens and recovered one. We issued 33 notice of violations, and we had issued 121 parking violations for a total of $2,925. And I didn't have it in your packet ahead of time, but I laid up there on your, front of you is an updated condemns properties list as of July 11th, which we've had some changes on that. And 331 North Fifth Street sold, but we've left it on there until renovation starts this month. So hopefully in the next few months, that'll come off there completely. So we have had some movement on that. I also laid up there an article from CAECO's magazine for our, that mentioned our Kentucky ABC Administrators Association. We had over 200 people attend that summit in June, which I had mentioned to you before, but it's a good article on that, and that impacts everyone statewide. And Danville is very instrumental in that, so we get accolades as well. Donna, are you going to mention the architectural heritage board stuff? Just a reminder that on Thursday, we're having the workshop to present the Danville architectural heritage or design guidelines, so those are coming to you and planning and zoning for your comments and approval. When that process is finished, then we will be able to utilize those for reviewing certificates of appropriateness.
What time is that?
5:30 on Thursday, the 17th.
And would you repeat the number of parking citations for the month?
121.
How many of those get appealed?
A small, very small amount, probably 10, 15 at most, but usually it's even less than that.
Just the ones issued to commissioners? You too, huh?
Are you all two of the 121 parking tickets?
Not really.
Not really?
What's your next question? Bridgette, when did we put the Sutton Steakhouse, when did we condemn that?
It's been on there for quite a while, Mayor. I don't remember the exact date, but I can find out. But it's time to...
So how long are we going to sit there before the whole roof falls in? Oh, here he comes.
We have forwarded that to the city attorney.
Here we go.
There should be an expectation that that would appear on either the next month's or next meeting agenda or the first meeting in September.
That's what we like to hear, counselor.
He just made that up.
Yeah, I know.
He's just saying that.
Well, I get asked that a lot, I'm sure you all do too, and I just want to zero in on it.
I had a question asked to me about some specific properties that I have forwarded on to Ron, and hopefully we'll get an answer on those also.
Yes, I will look into those, and thank you for sending those.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I have a question too. This is probably a first for us to see complaints on chickens. What's the ordinance in the city on chickens? Can you explain that?
They have to be fenced in.
Okay. What were the complaints?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Mr. Brooks. But that's usually what it is, is can you have chickens in the city and do they have to be contained, or can they be running around? That's usually what it is. Sometimes it's the rooster crowing. We get complaints about the rooster crowing and keeping people up. Since he said chickens, I'm assuming it wasn't the rooster, but it could be either one.
The property on South Danville, in the Longview area, I guess, close to Houston Hill Road, you know, we had the complaint from Mr. Jeffries. I know it all got cut down, but the last time I was called out for a visit, it was still just piled up and dying on the property. I wonder if there's a, you might want to try to give an update on that pretty soon too.
We'll get back to you, Commissioner. I don't know where that stands.
They hit, we were meeting today, so I got a call, so...
Okay.
Anything else?
That's a good report.
Excellent, Bridgette. Yeah, doing good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That took care of item six. Now we're at item seven for the city manager report.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Commissioners. Very briefly, I wanted to mention tonight that in your packet, among all the other papers that are there, is a first form of report that our staff has put together attempting to summarize the minutes and priorities discussed by our various committees. We have over 100 volunteers who meet regularly throughout the year, and from this point forward, we're going to have staff summarize those minutes, identify the issues that the committees are working on or as priorities. And as you see those, while we have oftentimes our community agencies or joint agencies make presentations before the city commission, very rarely do we have actual, our actual city committees make presentations to the city commission. Sometimes they do when they have specific recommendations, but it may trigger questions and lead to some presentations before the city commission in the future of one or more of our committees. But we endeavor basically to summarize their efforts for you so that you can follow their activities. So that's the first. Bridgette mentioned the meeting on our design guidelines, H.B. Design Guidelines on Thursday of this week at August 17th at 5:30 p.m. I would also mention that tomorrow night is a special called, well, it's not a meeting of the city commission, but it's a KLC forum at 5 o'clock, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow here in the city commission meeting rooms to discuss on a regional basis, inviting our area legislators and other concerned citizens and city employees, the topic of CER separation and stability. So we should have a very large crowd here tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 to talk about our pension reform efforts currently underway at the state level that may lead to a special session in the fall. I would expect this room and probably our basement to be filled to capacity tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00. I want to remind you also that our water treatment plant dedication will be held Wednesday, August the...
30th?
30th. 31 on my memo, it's Wednesday, August 30th, at 12:00 noon, and we have identified a long list of folks that will be present for that.
Excuse me, Ron, it's the 31st.
It is 31st, okay. Wednesday, 31st. At 12:00 noon at the plant, so we have that towards the end of the month. Speaking of water treatment plant, there was a recent editorial with regard to the status of our completion of that water educational plant, or park rather, on the plant property. And in your packet tonight are the detailed description and plans for that water educational park that will be an attraction to both our city's children and their parents or individuals that will be interactive educational and part of a comprehensive plan that the city has put together to provide education on the connection between individuals' responsibility not to contribute to litter and create non-source pollution, meaning individual trash and those type of things that will contribute to pollution. And we have planned to have the bid specs for that advertised at the end of this month and commence the process of redesigning and completing that park. Just for the public's information, our earlier plan was to try to expedite that by including it as an additional contract amendment to the duty construction company. They have a lot of other projects underway, and we were unable to negotiate the inclusion of that work, and so this has resulted in a bit of a delay in a separate route to get the best price for the public. But that process is to begin this fall. It will lead to the completion of that comprehensive educational park center on the grounds of the water treatment plant by early 2018. So there is that. I wanted to provide the commissioners and the public with some update too on our continuing dialogue in the community on 911 funding and our plans to implement continued and expanded services to our public, all who live in Boyle County. In your packet is a letter dated August 11th, 2017, from me, a city manager, to our state auditor, Mark, Mike Harmon, requesting that his office conduct an examination of the funds being held by the Boyle County Fiscal Court that consist of both local telephone tax receipts that they have collected and held over a number of years, as well as the state shared cell phone tax receipts that is distributed by the 911 Board. We've had lengthy discussions over a prolonged period of time, and I'm talking about six years, in terms of trying to reach a local, interlocal agreement on the certain service aspects of the 911 center and to increase and transfer funds being held that can only be used for those 911 purposes. Those efforts, while the discussions were cordial, I would say the outcome was nonproductive. And in addition to those local conversations this year, and we've had these conversations before the city commission about each and every year over the past five years, and actually that effort preceded me under the two prior city managers in terms of trying to reach agreement on some of those issues. The last time that funding was actually increased by the county was 2011. So we've gone all that time without any additional contribution, and certainly our costs have continued to increase. And so as we try to implement and plan to implement and are working to implement our next generation of equipment to provide enhanced services to this community, not only to our deaf community in terms of being able to text or have video communication, but also for all citizens, it is important that we receive those funds in a timely way. There has been consideration that possibly they could be used by Boyle County in acquiring those services for the rural members of Boyle County through an adjoining county arrangement. Our city has looked at that, we've visited that place, we have different conclusions than those that have apparently been concluded or are still under consideration by Boyle County Fiscal Court. But I mention this to you because we, last year, both our city attorney and I communicated by letter and in phone with the 911 Board, requested clarification and their assistance in having these funds be transmitted to the city of Danville. We were unsuccessful in those efforts. Their general response was that they preferred to see if we could work it out locally, and so no action was taken by the 911 Board. We also in February of this year asked for an attorney general opinion on these issues and have yet to receive a reply. And so this letter is just moving up the food chain in terms of trying to find an official that is willing to ask some questions about this process and to reach some conclusions that would be important for us to consider as we try to implement these new services and the enhanced services for all citizens of Boyle County. We are on track. We have advertised our equipment and fit-up requirements. We plan to, again, get the purchase of the equipment done in the fall of this year to expedite that process. And in order not to be constrained unnecessarily in paying the vendors for that equipment, tonight on our general budget, I am asking for a budget amendment to transfer $600,000 out of our reserve funds into our general funds for this purpose so that we can make an expedited payment for those necessary expenses. I fully expect at some point that we will recover those funds from the county, but they should not be a roadblock to progress as we implement and continue our schedule to have these services in place, I would say by April of 2018.
And Ron, for the benefit of the commission too, will you remind them of the approximate amount of funds that are held by the court at this time?
Well, I have not had a independent accounting for those funds, but I think the Fiscal Court, the county judge acknowledged they're in the range of $700,000 or $750,000, about three-quarters of $800,000, give or take.
So we're going to expend this money, and we have no idea when we'll get reimbursed?
Well, we are going to request, and in particular, if it follows clarification on these issues by the state auditor, I would expect it would be fairly expeditiously.
That's my understanding. The fiscal court has already made a motion, and it was approved to go ahead and send us the fund, the funds. However, there was no specified date as to on that motion.
I believe I was present at the meeting, that motion was made, and the county judge said, hold on, there may be other issues to consider, and that vote actually was not taken, although there was a motion and a second, I think, or at least some discussion of making the transfer earlier this year in about April or May. You know, in terms of our actual payment for these equipment cost and retrofit cost in the city hall itself, those will probably be paid by the city in, I'll say, October, and so we will be seeking reimbursement from the county, if not before then by transfer of all the monies, the actual amounts in early November. But the transfer is only part of the question. The ongoing issue is whether any entity other than the entity designated by state law, which is the 911 public service answering point that provides service to all in Boyle County, can receive and hold those funds and make the decision as to whether how much to release them. So it's not just about to accumulate funds, it's to clarify the process going forward.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I could ask. So I think this is good that we're trying to move forward. Is this then to say that considering Bluegrass 911 is not to be considered? You've already investigated that?
We have investigated that. Our staff, myself and others, our financial, the director of financial, chief financial officer, and others have met twice with county judge executive going back a month or two ago, and we reviewed some, in his words, very preliminary figures that was presented as to the cost that would be incurred in the first year for a city, county, and the other cities to move over there. We think those numbers are not accurate, and when we actually visited Bluegrass 911 Center, we were told that adjustments would be made in the year two based upon actual call volume of the regional costs received by Bluegrass, and based upon our call volume, we would be 60% or greater of the entire call volume. So our cost... So, our costs would, would go up dramatically in the second year, even if artificially constrained in the first year. You get into issues of management control, interface with local service delivery, first responders, a host of other issues. And we reached the conclusion that that option, which I believe will be discussed by the Boil County Fiscal Court in a meeting to be held on August twenty-ninth, is one that does, does not appeal to the city of Danville for some of the reasons that I've stated, or all the reasons I've stated, actually.
You all were there for how long?
We had our IT person, our chief, chief of police, and our chief financial officer attend. I was unable to attend on that particular date. But the three of them were there for an hour or two. We got copies of their audit information. We asked questions and we had a thorough visit.
How many calls did you, did they have in that length of time?
Well, it was reported to me during the forty-five minutes that they were actually in the call center itself. There were two calls that came in in that forty-five minute period of time.
And in that same period of time here in Danville, what would we, what would we have?
Well, it would depend on the day or night, but we have many, many more calls than that. Many.
So, when's that meeting? The twenty-ninth, when, what time and where?
Well, I have informally been advised by the county judge, and I met with him for breakfast at the hub, maybe last Wednesday. And it's, I believe, on the twenty-ninth at ten o'clock in the morning. I'll have to confirm that time. But it's not a joint meeting. It's a official meeting, a fiscal court, and the city officials are invited to attend if they wish to do so.
It's, yeah, it's in the fiscal courtroom.
It is. You know, one, one final comment, if I may. I mean, the issue of medical dispatch, which is of concern to all of us in this community, is a service that is not mandated by state law, but it is one that increasingly communities are going to, in order to provide the highest level of immediate service to those in need. It requires, as we had discussed in our budget session, it requires both telephone lines, we don't have adequate number at our current location. We do have at city hall. It requires additional staff in order to man both the calls that may come in requiring undivided attention, as well as staff to deal with the coordination of the response units to that call location, as well as any other calls that come in. It requires funding. It requires insurance. It requires a lot of things that is not simple to implement at the snap of a finger. So, we are pointing towards, after we get our new equipment and can gear up to do that, to implement that July one of two thousand and eighteen, assuming we have the money to do that and the support of the city commission to implement that as a priority next year. We also, we've had discussions, I have and I know you have, with several people in the community who have that as a high point of achievement, that they'd like to see implemented fairly quickly or rather immediately. It's, it's difficult, as I say, to do it immediately for the reasons I mentioned, but we are continuing to investigate how we can best implement such a system. We are scheduling a visit to the Frankfurt nine-one-one center. They're a community larger than us. They have volume. They have had an excellent record of providing that service. So, we're continuing our discussion with other centers to get into the more specifics of both the equipment, the lines, the personnel costs, the operating cost, and what their experience has been.
I believe Frankfurt is also a model for how the city operates in that the city center provides services for the entire Franklin County. So, the type of contractual relationship they have with one another is one that we seek to move towards here.
Do you have a date set for that road trip?
We were trying to do it Friday, August eighteenth, but that did not work. And so, we're trying, I would say, mid-September. The police chief is actually coordinating that. I don't know, Chief Gray, if you've actually nailed that down yet or not.
Would you provide a passageway for several of the commissioners to attend as well?
Yep, sure. We'll, we'll make it available for your participation, once it's confirmed. It's probably going to be, at least, Chief, do you remember the executive, the exact time that we were, date we were trying to do that?
No, sorry, no. Can you recollect that date?
Let me look on the calendar. I can tell you generally when we're trying to do it. My recollection is that we're trying to do it either Thursday or Friday of September the fifteenth, fourteenth or fifteenth, if they are available on those dates and we can coordinate it.
I was going to change the subject and just quickly say that we have a new fountain on the corner of Main and Fourth. And it is very nice.
And it was engineered at no additional cost, I would say.
Well, it, it's much better, much better. Earl, are you cringing back there?
No, no, because it's not finished. And I know the guy's working on it. I think, I think it will end up in a pretty good place, but the magic is he got it to, come up with a way to get it to automatically fill, which is fairly impressive without drilling the bolt.
Even as it is, it is a great improvement.
Yeah. It's sustained itself for a week now, so it's, that's a pretty big step.
I appreciate you sticking with that.
Ron, I know it's not in your, in your comments, but I think it might be a best use of everybody's time to maybe take a moment and talk about the bonding issue that we're going to get into tonight and the rate increase which we're going to get into tonight. Mr. Becker raised the question, and I'm sure there are people here that have similar concerns. And I think we need to give an answer, and perhaps that will answer their questions. I don't know.
Well, perhaps. Just before I move to that more technical issue, let me mention one of the meetings, if our city commissioner comments are going to be held at the end of the, the meeting. I was handed the information that one of the events that the city and the county do sponsor jointly, as well with our citizens' concern for human relations, is our end-of-summer family celebration potluck picnic. That's kind of a ton teaser there. It's at Pioneer Playhouse on September the third, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. So, people might want to mark their calendar and plan to attend that end-of-summer family celebration. With regard to, you know, can we delay any rate increase of our sewer system? We have experts here to talk again tonight, but generally, let's keep in mind that we found that we are basically losing almost half a million dollars in the past year in operating that system. Under law, you cannot do that. You have to have a break-even situation, first of all. We have other operational costs that, considerations that we have to also address. And our challenge to treat, you know, that flow in an environmentally correct manner is an expensive endeavor. Our ultraviolet lighting system now that we use is a, an old system, as is most of the equipment there. We haven't updated that plant in quite a while, and we haven't increased our sewer rates for over twenty years, except for annual discostion adjustments. Our bonding requirements for our sewer bonds and for any future bonds requires us to operate in certain ratios. And so, the short answer is that we're, we're losing money. We're not keeping up with our operational system requirements. We're not putting in any capital investment to improve the system going forward, meaning if we don't take some adjustment, it's going to be a huge problem from an environmental, agreed order point of view. And we'll wake up one day with millions of dollars that we're going to have to pay out in less notice. So, this is the planned proactive way. And the study that we've conducted with Connie Allen is the first professional, independent study that the city, to my knowledge, has ever done. It attempts to allocate the treatment cost fairly among the various user classes. The, the concern expressed about the great increase on individual consumers that was expressed tonight. There will be some change, but I think that's been exaggerated by the, by the information that has been presented thus far. And when we've had calls, and Michelle could speak to this, when we've actually translated those calls and concerns into actual practices, the, the adjustment isn't nearly of the magnitude as has been first feared by residential consumers. So, for all those reasons and more, including getting to the point of operating more efficiently, where we don't continue to, to spend too much for our energy usage in the operations of the utilities, the time is, is optimal and almost essential required that we act now.
If you compare the existing, speaking on average inside of the city, city of Danville, the existing average bill for the in-city customers based on the average demand of four thousand gallons. So, your average citizen inside of the city limits uses four thousand gallons a month. Based on the consumption of four thousand gallons, the existing sewer rates prior to the increase yield a sanitary sewer charge on your utility bill of eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. After the rate increase is fully implemented, the new bill will be twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents roughly, for a variance of nine dollars and ninety-two cents. So, the average customer inside of the city limits of Danville would see an increase of nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Now, we, we talk about industry-wide and, and the criticism is, was obviously, you're, you're nowhere close to managing it like everyone else. And what Connie was kind enough to email me some pages out of the rate book, current rate book, and we've been in the field a lot, so I've not yet assembled this, a summary to hand out, which we're working on with Ron. We'll include similar data in our newsletter. Prior to the increase in the Bluegrass Area Development District for the, includes the seventeen-county region immediately around Lexington, including Lexington, Danville is the lowest municipal utility rate in, in the region. There is one other utility company with a sanitary sewer bill that is based on that average consumption of four thousand gallons that is less than twenty dollars a month currently. After the increase, Danville will be the seventh lowest rate in the Bluegrass ad for the cities with a population over twenty-five-hundred. Cities comparable to us, for example, and I'll just glance at a few, Richmond, for four thousand gallons, your sanitary sewer bill will be forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents compared to the post-Danville rate implementation of twenty-eight dollars and change. The, giving another example, Winchester is forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Comparable is Cynthia at twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Frankfurt is forty dollars and twenty-four cents. Harrisburg is twenty-eight dollars and change also. So, we're, we're right in line with our area. And there's others that are, that are significantly higher than us, some that are lower than us, just for comparison's sake, if I can find a couple. Nicholasville's at twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Stanford still is at the twenty dollars and forty cents. But I don't know what their situation is, those two utilities. I know Nicholasville has seen changes to their water plant. I don't know what their, their sanitary sewer system current condition is necessarily. I don't know if they're, you know, I just don't know.
Earl, I guess the question I get asked from, Mr. Becker has asked me and others have too, is how did we get so upside down, you know, that we were bleeding money, you know, when we should be breaking even? How, how does that occur? And how do we, going forward, kind of keep that from happening?
Well, Michelle can speak to, you know, some of the, some of the intricacies of the finances as far as the, but fundamentally, and, and I say this to folks, not tongue-in-cheek, there's a reason why Kentucky American is not actively in the sanitary sewer business in that the sanitary sewer system is a break-even operation. You can't have a sanitary sewer system operate long-term. It's a violation of KRS, not, not alone, your bond covenants, that you are, if you operate with profit and, and you, you rake that profit and put it to another application, or like you, you, some cities do on the water system, right? You're allowed to do that. You can, you can effectively apply a rate of return on the water. You're not really allowed to do that on the sanitary sewer. There's, there's fundamentally a difference there. Century sewer operates on a break-even basis. It operates on, you can't really operate on laws either. You're, you're, you have an obligation to raise that rate to a break-even basis. What you define a break-even is held, is guided with your bond covenants and your ordinances and whatnot. So, you have to maintain a certain ratio of revenue to debt and, and that type of thing. So, maybe Michelle wants to chime in, in that aspect of it. But this is the first time in, since, since the, the system was upgraded in the late nineties that a, that we've sought an outside, third-party review, that it really has become necessary with, with, we had about a three-year period where the COLA really didn't change the rate. We have the cost of living annual adjustment embedded in the sanitary sewer ordinance in all of our utility, utility rates. And the annual rate change is about a percent, sometimes less, sometimes more. But in, after the recession, there was a period where the COLA was zero for a couple of years. That negatively impacted the sanitary sewer system and created a little bit of a negative variance with your, your revenue, right? The other thing is, and this is a very positive thing, is that folks are seeking to recycle more, folks are, are trying to use less water. And so, your demand is, is not necessarily increasing as much, or your loading is not necessarily increasing as much as it was. So, the trend just flattened out. And so, as expenses change, as Ku increases their power costs, as chemical prices go up, as labor prices go up, eventually it catches itself. And now, now you're here to where you're doing your rate study in, in really the right order. You finished the water plant. You didn't do something premature. You're going at it in, in an organized way, in a thoughtful way. You, you finished that work and now you're moving into the wastewater system. Your twenty-year capacity plan on your sanitary sewer system was completed in two thousand. Obviously, that, that is what we've given to the state that said, this is our capital, really our, our long-term facilities plan, really, that we're going to implement to make sure that we're compliant with, with our permits and whatnot with those folks. Obviously, it's two thousand and seventeen, right? And, and so, that, that's nearing, so, which is why you contracted with HDR this year to update that plan, and hopefully they'll get that done by January of two thousand and eighteen, so that we'll begin implementing that next twenty-year cycle of improvements. And, and all of those things are interrelated. And hopefully, hopefully that starts to make sense. And we'll, in the newsletter that Ron's hoping to put out soon, we'll, we'll hopefully elaborate on that a little bit more clearly and, and, and make it make more sense.
Is it, is it one of those things where maybe in the future we should have a, a rate study done more often than every twenty years?
Well, traditionally, well, and we, we talked about, mentioned this a little at the last meeting, but the time scale of the utility is not in the timeframe we're looking at in twenty years. The time scale of the utility is, is a hundred years. And so, the, the rate increases have come consistently over the life of the system, not necessarily consistently over the last twenty years. But to your point, we, we have said that as we went into the water system master plan in the two thousand and seven era and moved into the water plant preliminary engineering report in the two thousand and ten, eleven era, what we, we did say that as we moved past the water plant construction, past that rate study that verified the rates for the water system, and when we did then subsequently this sanitary sewer rate study, after this, we need to be really cognizant on those rate studies and implementations and be, and really modernize, just in the same way we modernize the actual rate itself on the water side, we need to modernize the management of, of those rates, which is do a rate study on, on a regular basis regardless of whether there's capital construction going on. Do those, implement those changes as necessary along the way so that you don't end up with a twenty-year gap. And so, yeah, that is a modern way of... And so, yeah, that is a modern way of implementing rates and changing rates, and it's one we will employ moving forward for sure. Hopefully that helps.
So I would assume that over this 20-year, 15-year period of time, since this is the first time we've had outside counsel, if you will, to come in and do that, then I would assume that it has been left to prior commissions and prior staffs to address this on their own. And of course, nobody likes to raise taxes when you don't have to, and I would assume that they elected to just let that one slide.
Well, to our earlier point, when the sanitary sewer system is breaking even and the COLA is accounting for it, you really have no basis on which you make a change. But the biggest benefit from having a third party in is you modern, when we talk about modernizing our rate, drill down to the industrial charges for a second. The industrial service charge, our minimum bill for the industry before was $485 roughly and 22 cents a month, correct? So if you were an industry and you were in that rate category, that was your bill anywhere from 0 to 20,000 gallons. After your consultant has looked at the numbers, looked at the loadings generated from those utilities or from those industries, the proposed rate, the proposed minimum bill on an industry is $164. So why, she's recommended that that minimum bill go down. And so that's not necessarily a reflection of the need to pull money from that user, but it's a reflection of what their minimum costs are, right? So our rate is modernizing, and for those users that use less than 20,000 gallons, they'll probably see a little bit actually of a neutral change to their bill. Could be lower even if they use a small amount. They actually could see a pretty good reduction. For example, if you're using 20,000 gallons, your minimum bill before might have been $570. It could be as low as $300 now, depending on other charges. So it's not necessarily an across-the-board increase, which is why it's a little bit distorted and worthy of significant communication, which is why we want to do that in a summary in the newsletter, so that folks can hold it and digest it. But again, if you were to try to do a rate increase 2010, just to quote-unquote "keep up," you wouldn't have had really a foundation to raise the rate. So therefore, you really aren't entitled to raise the rate prematurely until you have a demand on the sanitary sewer system, right? Which again, that's, a little bit of that's why the Kentucky Americans of the world's not in the sanitary sewer business as a practice. They own some sewer utilities, but that's just a necessary thing for them to get their water utility. Hopefully that makes sense.
And to answer the question about, you know, the step-up and everything, back when we raised the water rates, we had asked Salt River to concentrate on water first because we knew we couldn't raise water and sewer at the same time. So we were doing a step between the water and the sewer on the same bill, because we asked her to concentrate on the water, we'll do the water first because we had the water plant doing, now we're moved on six years later doing the sewer. So we have done it in a step in that case, but on the same bill. It was first water, now sewer. And it comes out the way that, you know, our third-party consultant says it's come out. That's the way, you know, it is. And sewer has increased in the last few years because EPA rules also. We have to follow those rules or we're going to get in a lot more fines than it would have cost us before and have to raise our rates to pay those fines. And we don't want to get in an agreed-upon order on something like that.
And I keep hearing about a quarterly newsletter.
We've talked about that for some time, and our plan at the staff level is to generate a quarterly newsletter in the middle of each quarter, highlighting the services and activities of the city government for our citizens in the city to be aware of. This first one, which we intend to publish towards the end of August, or maybe a few days after Labor Day, will cover not only the dedication of the water treatment plant, but also get into an in-depth discussion of the sewer rate study and the, what that means. And this first issue, we're planning to distribute system-wide to our water users. So it will be beyond the city borders, this first one.
Which I think will go miles in terms of helping to educate the public about things that don't necessarily make it in the news, and let them see and understand more of what goes on here and why.
We want them to also be aware in this newsletter of the upgraded webpage at the city, how they can connect, get personal notices of events, and just be more connected in both paper and non-paper formats.
Any questions for the city manager?
We still on his report?
Yeah. If there's no more questions, we'll move right on into hear the public, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue, as long as it's moral and legal. Moore, I believe I saw your hand first.
Hello, my name is Lori Kagan-More. I'm, I'd like to be able to get an update on the Wayfinding signage project. We had the community meeting seven weeks ago, and we haven't had an update since. And I did ask for one a few weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, at this, at this meeting. At the, at the meeting seven weeks ago, there were between 20 and 30 community members who came and expressed a lot of interest specifically about the issue of getting signage on the bypass for some of our cultural assets as we go through this new process. And it's not so much that we're in a huge hurry, and I know that there are various delays, you know, for various kinds of urgent business that the city has, but we are concerned about being included in the process and being informed about the process and finding out about the content of the signs and some of that. So I'm wondering if we can get some update here.
Well, very briefly, I will assure you, and we've had private conversations or just direct conversations about your interest in those of others in being made aware of when the next meeting and next steps would occur. And rest assured that we will notify you of when those dates are scheduled. They have not yet been scheduled, but I think they will be scheduled in September, and we'll have our consultant back down in another meeting, very similar to what we had at the first time around. But due to a variety of work issues and his own agenda as well as ours, we simply have not scheduled or made the next steps, nor, to my knowledge, had any further conversation directly with him since we last had our meeting. So if you're wondering what has occurred, so are we. But the consultant is working, and he's going to be coming back at some point to be scheduled in September.
So, in other words, decisions haven't been made about some of these questions I'm asking?
That's correct.
Okay. And then when that comes up, there will be another meeting coming up?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing us this evening. I, my name is Joni Lukens, friends of mine, various friends of mine. And we come as a group of citizens of this community who are heartbroken, outraged by the events that we saw in Charlottesville, Virginia, last weekend. And we believe that the response to these heinous acts of racism, those responses need to come not just from our federal government, or the state of Virginia, or the city of Charlottesville, but come from communities all across this country, no matter how large or small. And so we've come to ask you to pass a resolution this evening condemning those acts of racial We've already seen the city of Lexington has done so. I'm hopeful that many cities and communities will be doing so today or in the next few days. We also believe that timing is critical because the eyes of the nation, the hearts of the nation are focused on this issue right now. And so we have brought to you for your consideration, a resolution that we hope you will pass or amend and then pass condemning these acts.
Would one of you give those to the commissioners? And maybe to Mr. Scott as well?
With your indulgence, I will read this very short resolution. I'm sorry. Sure. Whereas Danville is a city that promotes peace and unity among all peoples, and whereas Danville continues to strive toward racial harmony, and whereas we denounce the hateful racist words and actions witnessed in Charlottesville, Virginia, on Saturday, August 12, 2017, therefore be it resolved that we, the citizens of Danville, Kentucky, stand in solidarity with the people of Charlottesville in condemnation of acts of racial hatred and violence. And we would ask that this resolution, if passed, in its present form or amended by you, be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and also sent to the mayor of the city of Charlottesville. I think that the citizens of Danville will be proud and comforted to know that the leadership of their city stands in this position.
Thank you, Ms. Lukens. Counselor, I'm just going to ask the question because this is, this is a timely issue and going, this process is a bit unusual. Is there any reason that we shouldn't address this?
Our typical format would be for these matters to be submitted to staff for review and placement in a format ready for your approval. Where staff is somewhat sensitive to the fact of that process being followed by legislation coming from staff in the city manager's office as opposed to citizens writing legislation. Based on this, it is clearly benign in the fact of its policy. If you wish to approve it in its format, I think you can.
Thank you. We're here, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. Some of you all were the fact that I, my birthplace is Fredericksburg, Virginia, and oftentimes is considered Charlottesville, Virginia, is one of our sister cities. So I offer a motion with regrets that we have to do this tonight, but I understand the need and the urgency, so I move for its approval.
I will, will second that. Also, I'm a former resident of Charlottesville, great town, great campus. Unfortunate that something like that could take place there, but it could happen anywhere. And I would like, whilst they're up there, to the Brantleys and whoever else, Jim was involved with that vigil last night. It was very well done, and I'm happy to second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Atkins, seconded by Commissioner Cottle. Any further comments, questions?
We appreciate you folks coming forward and doing all this work, and for council to allow us to do that tonight. I think that you explained it well typically. It would have to come back at another meeting, but you've expressed some urgency, and we feel, I think we feel that, so.
Any further comments? Saying none, chair called a question, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your endorsement.
I must tell you that I was contacted by WKYT-TV today to ask, did Danville have any, any types of statutes on public property? And to the best of our knowledge, we do not. I also went further to say, it's interesting that while this was going on in Charlotte, we were having a dedication of the Professor John W. Bates, Bates Middle School.
That's right.
And moving that on to the soul of Second Street. And it's, I like that contrast a lot. And she did too. What she does with it, I don't know. Thank you all.
Yes.
Anything else on hear the public? Saying none, we'll move.
I think you had one.
Oh, can it?
A lot of people standing. Not everybody leaving.
I have questions, and it goes back to the 911 fee. Can I ask questions about that? Does anyone know when the 911 fee on phone bills was instituted, when we started doing that?
My general understanding is that was in mid-1980s, and the county levied the tax at the request of the city. It was an amount of 50 cents per landline phone. That amount remains unchanged to date, although in many counties, including those surrounding counties, it's now four or $5 a month on landline telephone taxes.
Is there state legislation reference this 911 collection on phone bills? Does that have to have, does that have to be state legislation?
There is state legislation. It's the interpretation of the legislation that is different.
Okay. The interpretation of the state.
Well, more clearly, if you want me to respond to that, and this is unusual for me to do so, but on this important issue, I would say that both our city attorney and I identified some time ago, and I mean several years ago, the reference to the dual streams of income that fund 911, other than the general appropriations of the city and the county. Those are the local telephone tax of 50 cents per month that everybody pays who has a landline, and then the taxes on cellphones, both those that are prepaid and then the monthly version that has, I'm not sure what the rates are on those, they're higher than 50 cents, and they've been increased in recent years by the General Assembly to include a tax on the prepaid lines. The statute clearly says that those funds distributed by the state can only be sent to the certified E911 answering point and used for approved purposes, and in essence, sent to that 911 point if in fact it provides service to the entity of government that levied the local telephone tax. If I have that correctly, and I may not have it exactly correctly, but in essence, it basically says funds can only be distributed to the E911 center that provides the service countywide and used for only purposes prescribed by regulation.
And that, if that being the case, then the money should come straight from, well, how does the money stream get from the phone company? Does it go to the state? And then it comes from the state to the county now?
The state collects the CMRS cellphone, which is by far the majority of revenue now. The local landlines are disappearing rapidly, and the annual amount collected and remitted locally to Boil County by the telephone carriers amounts to approximately $50,000 a year. The CMRS funds are much greater and will be greater as they've increased the taxes on the cellphones.
Is the county considered the pass-through entity to the, from, between the collector of the fee and the 911 center?
That's our argument. That's our argument, that they should be a mere pass-through or escrow agent for those funds.
Okay.
Not a depository.
That sounds like, my next question is, does the pass-through entity, if there has to be one, do they have the liberty to limit how much they pass on through to 911?
Not by statute or regulation, no.
No matter how they read or interpret what they want to send or what we might need them to send to the city, they are not at liberty to make that distinction.
We believe not. Opinions might differ on that.
We find no basis in the law, regulation, or logic, or anything otherwise.
Do we have an accounting mechanism that would tell us how much has been collected by the phone companies and sent to the county on a yearly basis since its inception?
The answer is really no, and that's why we've asked for the state auditor's review.
And after we do this, then how would we continue into the future to see to it that the funds, that this never happens again, that this stockpiling of funds never happens again? What would that look like?
I'm not aware of it occurring in any other case in Kentucky other than in this one in Danville, Boyle County. Other counties that might be in initial receipt of those funds immediately or within a short period of time turn them over to the authorized and approved and certified E-911 center or the government that owns and operates that, according to law, and that's Danville. We own the facility, we hire the staff, we supervise the activities, and those monies can only be sent to the entity for the benefit of the PSAP. Now technically, the PSAP doesn't have standing under the law, and unlike a government, you know, may not be able to receive them directly. I think it has to go to the owner of the PSAP, basically.
That is correct. To use an analogy that may be more familiar, we had Donna Fector speak tonight on solid waste management for Boyle County. This would be comparable to the city allocating funds for the administration of her services, which the city does annually, but holding those funds instead of remitting them to the county for that particular use. And when Ms. Fector needed funds for any capital improvements, things of that nature, approved expenditures, submitting a purchase order to the city of Danville for the maintenance of her department. There is no other situation or relationship that we cooperate in the exchange of services with a county that operates in this manner but 911. And the goal, as stated publicly at the last special call meeting on this matter at the 911 center, is to have a relationship that is modeled throughout the state at other places and where communities, counties, and cities operate by service agreement. We know of no instance where a county or a rural center provides services to an urban setting. And in those situations, cities typically have service contracts for any other provider that they give those services to, just as we do with water and sewer. We, as a regional provider of those services, we seek to do the same thing in this situation and clarify it all by contract.
Thank you. Thought about it for a while.
Sounded like you've been talking to Stephen.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right on to the next.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I was taken to task about two weeks ago about the sewer rate change. We kept using the word "tax," and it was called on my attention that it's really not a tax, it's a usage fee. People's fees will go up and increase according to their usage. So I'm sure we get that message out, because I should not be the only depository of that information.
So we'll move right on to item eight, the payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. Chair will accept a motion.
So move to pay the August 15, 2017 bill list totaling $479,307,400. Yeah, I know, I got your attention, wake up.
Yeah.
$479,307,400, right?
You didn't teach math.
That's a good thing. We have a motion, is there a second?
I will second the lower amount.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear any discussion?
I was thinking about my lottery winnings.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is the second reading of the sewer rate change. It's ordinance 1898, which you have in front of you. Do we hear a motion?
She needs to read it.
This is a second reading of ordinance 1898, an ordinance amending CDO Section 18-80, subsection three pertaining to sanitary sewer collection, treatment, and disposal facilities and the monthly sewer service charge per se.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll move for approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1898. At least we can talk about it.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. We are in discussion.
Can I hear one more time from either Earl or Michelle what the average household increase would be, since I missed the other meeting?
In terms of dollars, which is what I have in front of me, on the average bill for 4,000 gallons, today the customer pays $18.36, and the proposed is $28.28. I'm sorry, $28.28.
For what time period?
Month.
For 4,000 gallons. It's not time.
No, it's not a time sensitive thing.
Correct. For $4,000 of consumption.
And the average usage? I mean, is that?
In Danville, that's about average.
Per month?
Is that monthly or bimonthly?
That's monthly.
Monthly, okay. But our bills are bimonthly.
On a bimonthly basis, yeah.
And if I understand you correctly, we have to be very aware of the EPA and our present situation, and those people, they play hardball, especially when it comes to violations, and we've got maintenance to tend to, and nobody wants to pollute our drinking water.
That is correct. Yep.
And if something were to happen, unfortunately, we did not get to fix it incrementally. We have to fix it yesterday.
So previously, and I know we kind of beat, you guys beat this to death last time, and we spent a lot of time with it today, so previously we've been making up some differences out of the general fund or the water fund or some?
Out of the water fund.
Okay.
Not out of the general fund.
Yeah. This will be some new monies then, because we have to do it. Is there any way to take concessions that's good for the average household in any of our taxes or any of our other?
We can't supplement this with any general fund money. That's not allowed.
Goes back to what we described earlier about the center sewer service. This is not a tax. To confirm that, this is a cost to provide sanitary sewer service at your home. So in other words, when you fill your bathtub, when you drain that water out, the cost to treat that water that is unsanitary, to get it to an environmentally safe condition and place that water back into Clark's Run, this is what you're being charged for. It is not a revenue generator for the general fund. It does not fund other departments. It is the cost to provide sanitary sewer service exclusively.
Now, one of the things, just one of the things that's brought this on is our pending issuance of bonds for our energy savings.
That's brought the timing on, because we have to have our utility.
Should we not pass this, or should we do it incrementally? Does that do anything to the issuance of these bonds?
It will delay the issuance of the bonds probably.
It will delay the issuance of the bonds, and so we will not be able to start our energy efficiency project.
But to answer, what I wanted to do is get away from that and answer the question about what do you do when you don't do your performance contracting? What's your, the foundation of that is your automatic meter reading system, which allows you to transition eventually into a monthly bill, but it also allows you to, in theory, capture lost revenue, which ultimately drives rates down in the long term. So you have to artificially inflate rates to those ratepayers to recover revenue that you've lost, and so it is part of a bigger, much bigger picture that ultimately leaves the city in a much stronger financial posture moving forward than just simply saying, oh, we want to, just similar to the water plant, when we started the water plant process, once the commission knew it was going to construction, it went ahead and did the rate adjustment to the direct serve customers based on the impact to the rate of that. It was an impact to rate study we did, and they went ahead and changed that. The benefit to that is it decreased your indebtedness, so therefore it decreased the amount of interest you're paying, which ultimately decreased your rate. So by taking the rate increase now, you're ultimately producing a lower rate increase for the life of the utility, which again is a 100-year life, not in the cycle that we're looking at. It's a long-term effect to your rate.
The other consideration that you need to think about is the water has been supplementing it, and it will no longer be able to do that because I have to start paying the bond debt on this water treatment plant. Right now, I'm just paying the interest on that plant. Construction's coming to an end, so I have to start paying principal also.
So would you agree with the statement that this ordinance is literally a linchpin to our moving forward on our energy savings issue, our water savings issue, or revenue enhancements from better calculation of usage?
Well, quite simply, the system is losing nearly half a million dollars a year, and we're not making any provision for the required capital replacement cost either. And even before you get to the questions of energy efficiency and reduction, we're not even meeting the basics. And we can't continue to supplement it, as Michelle said, because we've got to pay back the principal from the water revenues, as we've only been paying interest. So we're at that point in time where it's got to become sufficient, if you're in trouble.
That said, I don't think we have any responsible choice but to do this. That's one person's opinion.
In this case, I would tend to agree. Unlike everybody else, I don't necessarily like it.
Like it, but it is what it is.
I keep thinking back to something Earl said four or five years ago, that the EPA will eventually, more than likely, have us treat stormwater before it gets in the system. And so, you know, there's no telling where that'll put us, so.
Any further comments or questions?
Well, I would say that we have been doing it, and we've just been taking money from another fund, but the EPDA doesn't like it that way, and so you're right, we have to move in a different direction.
Any further comments? Chair called the question. All in favor of, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins.
For the same reasons last, on the first reading, I still vote no.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Because I think it's the only realistic and responsible action that we can take, and it serves as a linchpin to many items moving forward that we have discussed for over a year now. I vote yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Go along with that. I just don't think we have a choice, so I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Sears.
Item 10 is the first reading of ordinance 1899, 2017, 2018 budget amendment. Michelle?
We are asking for an ordinance 1899 to amend the budget amendment by increasing it by $600,000. As discussed before, this would be to pay for the equipment for the 911, the next generation 911 equipment. Whether we get the money from the county this fiscal year or we pay it out of reserves this fiscal year and wait and get the money later, we will still need this budget amendment because we budget on appropriations, and since we are changing our way of counting and we're holding the assets now like we should, we will need to do this budget amendment either way.
I move for approval of the first reading of budget ordinance 1899.
Thank Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 1899, this is the first reading, amendment number one to the 2017, 2018 city budget, an ordinance amending a portion of ordinance number 1895, which established the city of Danville, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year 7117 through 63018 by appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sears.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Item 11 is the first reading of ordinance 1900. Do we hear a motion? Actually, would you like to read it first?
She's going to make Stephen read it.
No, that's fine. I was like, do I have to read it twice?
No, don't make him. He'll charge us. I'm kidding. Read it, Stephen.
Do you want me to explain the ordinance first?
Sure.
Okay. This is, ordinance number 1900 is the ordinance to sell bonds in order to do the energy efficiency audit, which is part A, and part B is to refinance bonds that we have on the parking garage. We refinanced bonds a few years ago that were the variable bonds. These are the fixed-rate bonds. We look at these every year to see what, according to the interest rates in our bond covenants, of which ones would be better to refinance. We might be able to get a better rate to refinance, just to save money. This one, we think we will this year, to be able to refinance. Part A is for $8,890,000. That is to do our total energy efficiency project through all our funds. It's over six different funds. And then the second part, like I said, is for $2 million, a little over $2 million in order to do a refinance of the parking garage bond, fixed rates.
Do we still need to read it, or is that?
Yeah, we gotta read it.
He's going to start charging us by the word.
Y'all take your time, but hurry up.
The first reading of ordinance number 1900, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its general obligation public project bond series 2017A to pay or reimburse cost of public projects for the city and general obligation refunded bond series 2017B to refund and redeem all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, series 2006A approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, approving and authorizing the advertisement and acceptance of the bids for the purchase of the bonds, providing for a continuing disclosure undertaking with respect to the bonds and the city's compliance therewith, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Could you repeat that?
Do we hear a motion?
I'll move.
Commissioner Atkins first, Mr. Cottle second.
Sounds good.
Were there discussion? Any discussion? Chair called the question. All in favor of?
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sears.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Next item is Resolution 2017. Would you like to take a break? Are we okay?
She's okay.
All right, we're all right. 2017-08-14-02, this is in regards to asset management of, and I don't know what for. In fact, I have some questions.
This is an investment, we have two investment counts that we have at Hiller Lines. All this is, is they're agreeing to invest our money within coordinates to KRS 66.480, which they have to agree to invest into that period, because that's the only thing that we can invest.
How much is in this?
There is $750,000 approximately in one and $198,000 to $200,000 in the other one.
And the purpose of this is what?
They're, both of them are held. They're, both of them are held for our reserves. It's just to get a better rate.
And what kind of, what kind of return have, have we been getting here? Do we know?
We, we looked at it a couple of years ago, and we were getting average returns, not a whole lot because it has to be on because of what they're allowed. They can only invest in bonds and certain things because of KRS 66-480.
What are we paying for that service?
It's a minimal fee. I would have to look up and see what we pay on each one of them, but it's a minimal fee.
When was the last time we bid it out?
This has not been bid out in a very long time. This one hasn't. It's, it's been invested for my, for my time. All this is, is on the 66. We can bid those out later, but this is just agreeing that they'll invest the funds in, with that ordinance.
Yeah, I think we're always looking for the best value. I didn't say the best deal. I said the best value.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So move. Approve resolution 2017-08-14-02.
Second.
Commissioner Atkins has a first, Commissioner Terry second. Discussion?
So what, what is your recommendation then? And what would your?
Well, if it hadn't been bid out a long time.
We're going to look at that.
Like all of our professional services.
We're going to look at that. But this is just to, to say that they're, what they have invested right now is under that agreement.
Right.
Okay. Got you.
Any further questions, comments? So, no, the chair will call the question, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Now we'll get to resolution 2017-08-14-03.
This resolution is to change our credit card companies to, and to be able to sign those documents with COM data. Our, these are the credit cards that we actually use at the city and take places. This will be have a one-time fee and not an annual fee like we pay now, and then also we will get cash back every month. Just trying to get a little bit of money back to the city for what we spend.
Yeah, boy.
A move for approval of resolution 2017-08-14-03.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sears, discussion?
Can I have one?
No.
No. No further comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. And we have the first reading of ordinance 1901. This is the ad valorem tax rates for the fiscal year 1718. Mr. Scott?
Shall we have the city clerk read?
Clerk, read the ordinance, commercially.
This is the first reading of ordinance 1901, an ordinance establishing ad valorem tax rates for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and penalties for non-payment.
Mayor and commissioners, as you know, under state law, cities are required to annually levy an ad valorem tax rate. And in so doing, there is the requirement of the state for local government, citizen counties, to levy at least the minimum tax rate allowable under law, which is termed the compensating tax rate. That compensating tax rate has a complex formula that adjusts that rate based upon the assessed value and the reassessed values of property within the jurisdiction of taxation, excluding new growth. And the idea of that compensating tax rate is to roll back the rate to not have a windfall or produce greater revenue from that existing property. Also allowable under the law, and has been since 1979, is the opportunity for cities and other taxing jurisdictions, such as schools and counties, to levy a tax rate to generate a increased revenue of 4% on that subject property, excluding new property. In our budget discussions this year, we discussed all our revenue needs, all our service needs, and our budget did not contemplate increasing property taxes. Accordingly, we have done the computation of the compensating tax rate and actually decreased that compensating tax rate for the year ahead. This memo that Michelle, our chief financial officer, prepared for you showed the difference between that and what would have been generated if we had taken the allowable 4% increase. In total, that new, that difference was about $51,389. But because we agreed in our, in our budget and in our other tax adjustments that we had, did take earlier this year, it is recommended tonight that we take the lowest possible tax rate, that being the compensating tax rate, which actually decreases that rate for property taxes. With the, with the effective new rate being .144 or, or 14 cents and 400ths per 100 assessed value, it's down 1/100 of a point from the prior year.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval of first reading of ordinance 1901.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. We are in discussion. Ben, you ought to make this headlines.
Yeah, I was going to say, where is everybody when we lower something?
Yeah.
Michelle, who does, who figures the compensating rate? Because I, you do? That's a witch doctor kind of.
That would be me.
That's a voodoo.
She does her voodoo magic. Could you do that more often?
Any further discussion?
Just the point to be made that Danville's property tax rate remains one of the lowest in Kentucky. We did a survey a few years ago, and of the 130, 128 or 130 cities surveyed at that time, Danville's rate was about 116 on that, and I don't think it's changed significantly since that time.
That's a subtitle, Ben. Any further comments?
You can just let Mike write it, and you can sign it or whatever.
We'll take care of it. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sears.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
And finally, we're going to get to resolution 2017-08-14-04. This is the water plant change order number nine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Love potion number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. The resolution accepts change order number nine with duty construction on the water plant. With this, it increases the contract amount by $41,350 for the items identified in the memo. I'll go over those if you're so inclined. The, the, the result of these change orders, it also adds 34 calendar days to their contract for the work that was identified, not necessarily for any other, other reason. It was specifically for the work identified in those tasks.
How are we doing on budget overall?
We're doing, doing well. The, we will expect another change order, hopefully in two weeks. That will be the equivalent to rural developments balancing change order to, into the job where we look at our quantities. But what we'll do with, with that change order is remove the unspent allowances and whatnot. We expect that to be a pretty good reduction in the $125,000 range, could be a little bit more. So overall, we're doing, doing well. We, we have not gotten really into the contingency at what we would consider at all. Percentage wise, I'm trying to, the reason I'm, I'm trying to come up with some of the percentages, but the percentage of change orders on this contract are low industry-wide, the HDR's plans. Of course, we, we reviewed those a lot, like in terms of staff, not me. The, the water plant staff looked at those quite a bit on the front side, iterated through those. What can be said is rather than change orders being a result of defective work, the amount of change orders we've had have been value-added decisions that the commission ultimately has endorsed or staff has requested. For example, the 1924 building, the parapet wall on the roof, that was, that was a fairly large expenditure in, in the, in the $50,000 to $60,000 range from memory. Total brickwork that you've done on that original building after you got to construction was probably $80,000. That, that was not in the original contract. So that is not something that, that is truly, that's not a result of poor planning or necessarily. It was, let's do this while we're here. It makes the most sense.
And what's the new completion date?
It is substantially complete. The, the contractor was substantially complete in June officially, and so now they are doing their final punch list and closeout items.
You have the January 11th date?
Yeah.
Is that the correct date?
No. The finished date that is in the change order does not reflect their actual completion date, and that will hopefully begin to be covered at the next change order. Effectively.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution 2017-08-14-04.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, second.
I haven't said anything.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle.
Did you see Rick, Rick did it like that? Rick seconded.
Looking at me. At you.
We are in discussion. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to say real quickly that I ran into a couple over the weekend who have chosen to retire here, and they've been here maybe eight or 10 years. But it was so refreshing to hear from them because they have lived all over the country and in large cities, and they always say what great services we have here and how economical it is to live in Danville. And they think that what we get for what the, the citizens pay is, is a very good, good deal and a good thing, and they were very encouraging to all of us, so.
Good.
It's nice to hear.
Since we're on the water treatment plant, I was really excited and amazed by the letters to the editor by the two, the eight-year-old, the 10-year-old, and the fact they got published and had a conversation with the mom, and I told her we'd get back with her. So I think it'd be neat to send that family a thank you note from the city and include these great plans for the park that we have in place, so they'll know that it's not a list there until it's not been lost. But I thought that was very, I'm a, I'm not a math teacher, I'm a social studies, a civics teacher, so those are two civic-minded young, young ladies to be rewarded for their participation.
I invited their family to the ribbon cutting on the 31st.
You did?
I did.
That was neat.
Are there any further comments?
We don't have any.
We don't? Oh, wait, we have to vote on this.
Yes, we do. I'll call the question, all in favor of resolution 2017-08-14-04, water plant change order number nine, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. No executive board tonight. We are in.
What? No, executive.
Executive session. We are in commissioner comments.
Commissioner comments, right. I think you segwayed well, Commissioner Terry and Commissioner comments, by getting some feedback from the senators. It's good. I've been running into some folks visiting our fine community as well and actually thinking about retiring here, so that's nice to hear. But I, I do want to make a few, you know, I like to start things off here. The Soul Second Street was a big success. I think that everybody knows that, and the feedback from the heart of Danville was probably the largest crowd ever, so it's picking up some steam. If you haven't gone yet, talking about great things in this community, West T. Hill's production of Babe Dean and the Great Eclipse is very, very funny and very interesting. And certainly, we're into the last few weeks of actual plays at the Pioneer Playhouse with Elvis's left the building, so we don't want to miss that before it's gone.
I'd like to know how many of us are going to be able to attend this meeting on the 29th?
The county meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I have it on my calendar.
Which one?
The county meeting on the 29th, and which, which will you have been invited to attend?
I, I wouldn't miss it.
Rick, you want me to make it?
I think I'm here.
Okay, good. Communication's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, and just, and just to clarify, that meeting is a meeting of fiscal court.
That's right.
So you're invited to attend.
We are spectators.
That's correct. I just wanted, I didn't want there to be unrooted expectations when you try.
However.
We know how to spectate.
As, as, as we did at our meeting, we, we allowed dialogue. Perhaps they will be so generous.
The county judge did indicate to me that he would give me a chance to offer any comments at the conclusion of that meeting.
Excellent.
Yeah, our comments, just, we need to listen.
My last comment for the evening is, we just agreed to spend a whole lot of money with Anthony, so I think suffer his own.
Oh, yeah. What are you laughing about? We're not laughing up here.
And I will be attending as well as Ron will next week, the governor's local issues conference, is that what it's called? In Louisville. So I think most of the time the city has not attended this conference, but I think it's important that we do. So I'm going to go, and Ron will be there. Maybe some of the other ones cycling through, so that should be, that should be fun.
I want to thank staff, Ron in particular, for these, these notes, minutes from the committees. You know, we, we've, we've tried to think how we could do this. It's going to be great, and thank you very much.
Well, on behalf of staff, I will accept that thank you. I will say that other staff other than I have prepared it, but we do want to make it useful to the city commissioners.
And I, and I want to make sure we don't leave without having a comment about the 911 enhancement and the emergency medical services that we might be able to provide. There's been lots of discussion the last two weeks about what we can and cannot do, and I'd like to see us continue that dialogue and continue that work on it because last Friday, I had a really interesting meeting for about an hour with a citizen who was concerned about this, and he gave me some real good insights about how we can make some of this work without additional personnel and without spending $300,000. So I'd like to see us continue that dialogue and continue seeking out that good information. I guess that's a hint to staff, I guess.
Anything else?
No.
Second.
I move for executive session.
There's a motion for adjournment and a second. Do I hear any, any other likewise? I'll say, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good night.